Okay, item two on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? If anyone's on the form? Okay, great. Thank you. Item three is to consider and/or approve the minutes from our previous commissioners court meeting.
No corrections or additions to the regular meeting on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Item four is to consider and/or approve the county auditor's tabulated report to commissioners court. Anything?
No.
Everyone have a chance to review? Any questions for Alicia? Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the tabulated auditor's report as presented.
There are sections. I hear it. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Hey, any questions on the bills? Do I hear a motion?
Need to pay the bills.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Right. Amy, do you have payroll?
I have some change.
Okay.
And we have new employees, Rochelle Olivas, hired day ten-one at the extension agent. Alyssa Rowland, she is in the adult probation. And she was hired ten-nine. And then we have a separated employee, Bridget Marshall, out of nine-thirty from the tax office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna skip down to item fifteen, which is to consider and/or approve any A R P grant projects. And Julie Winters is here with the United Way, and they just have an update on their their mental health initiative. And so just go right ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to let y'all know that our peer support program is going well. Rico and Amber now have both gone through a six-month training from the So they're certified to peer support specialists now. So we accomplished that. They've got two hundred and fifty hours each of working with just behind them. This week we'll be hiring our third one. We have finally found a young lady. If she accepts, that will be an accomplishment. Her lived experience is different from the other two. And so just another person that can help people in need. We have recently sent seven people to wrap one training, which is our Wellness Recovery Action Plan. We're fixing to post about two training, of which we're going to get these people to where they can facilitate and we can begin holding our own rep training to a program here within the county without having to bring someone in and spend a whole bunch of money to do all of this. So things are working well there. We are in the middle of our SIM mapping, which is with the judicial system. We're gonna have people from the state who come in. They're trying to figure out where the holes are, where people are coming before the courts with mental health. And if there's anything that we can do to better the system that we have, and they're supposed to be able to help us fill in some gaps, give us some money maybe even to help us get some of the things that the lawyers and the judges needed. So our final meeting for that is on November second. So that and that's that's free to us, but it's been really good just to bring people together from different parts of the community that at times they think, oh, I could, because you don't do what I need. And we're figuring out why things were not getting done, and we're trying to fix some of those problems. So that's a good thing as well. And I think, oh, it didn't print everything off. I'm sorry about that. But things are going well. We're helping people. We just had five of the first clients in that three-month period of time. And then thirteen people from the community as well. Amber's helped about thirty people over the last year. Any questions for us?
And you've got, you attached the reimbursement request of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars.
Yeah.
Do you see that?
And I sent it to you as well this morning in his email.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the update. We appreciate you.
Thank you. We appreciate we all are new employees.
Okay. Alicia, do you, do you need a motion to approve this reimbursement, or we'll just put that on the bills for next time? Okay, all right, all right, great. Okay. At this time, we're gonna break into executive session. We're, which are sections five-five-one-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, five-five-one-zero-seven-two, deliberations about real property, and section five-five-one-zero-seven-four, personnel matters. So if everyone will just have a seat in the hallway, we will call you back.
Move to.
Okay, so the consultation with attorney. No, the first one we did was the deliberations about real property. And it was from nine thirty seven to nine fifty one. And then the consultation with attorney is nine fifty one to nine fifty four. That was really short. This one matters nine fifty four to ten fifty one.
Ten fifty one, yes, got it. Okay, all right. The next item on the agenda is item number nine to consider and or approve any action from an executive session and no action at this time. So item ten is to consider and or approve reappointment of Sheriff J. Dale Butler to the Texas Panhandle Center Board of Trustees. So we got I got this letter from the executive dress director Melissa Tally. And they are he's up for the sheriff is up for reappointment to the board and they're just asking for us to concur with that and send them notification that we concur with the reappointment of the sheriff to the TPC board. Go hear motion.
A move to reappoint Sheriff J. Dell Butler to the Texas Panhandle Center Board of Trustees.
Motion and second, any further question? All in favor? Okay, item eleven is to consider and or approve our newspaper of record. So we have currently have the Frit Eagle Press, is that what you're called? As our newspaper of record. But we do have two newspapers in the county and so last year we appointed the Frits paper, but it's been a year, so we're gonna hear a presentation from the border news Herald and from the Frit Eagle Press, so. Destiny, correct?
Yeah, but Jessica was supposed to make the presentation.
Right.
And she has had an MRI.
Yes, she emailed me and told me that she was gonna have to have, so you all have a packet of things here from from the border news Herald. Is there anything you want to go over or anything, anything you need to say, so? You've got your display rates. I can't even read that, I need glasses on. Does anyone have any questions for Destiny on the border news Herald? And this mission, and I'm sorry I didn't get this to y'all before today, but little bookie to email.
Do you have your circulation rate? Numbers? I didn't see them.
They have twelve thousand followers on Facebook. Right.
What is the border news Herald's?
Oh.
How many times are you published a week? Three times.
Tuesday, Thursday, and then there's a leave edition. That leaves out Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Do y'all have any questions for the border news Herald? If not, we'll let Tara make a presentation and then we can compare the
Everybody?
Yep, and this is this packet of information is from Tara.
Y'all have the packets that for you, yeah, the black packets.
Yeah.
First, I wanted to say that I'm very grateful that I've been able to represent Hudson County for the last year. I do feel very blessed that you let me be in that position. It's been an honor and it's something that I hope you will allow me to continue. I would like to share some information on why I believe that the Eagle Press would be the best choice for the county as the paper of record. Now, some of this information you already know, but as you know, there are three basic components in designating a paper of record. That is circulation, cost, and benefit to the community. And circulation, just to go over that, has two components. It is subscriptions and then it's also sales. And circulation, just to go over that, has two components. It is subscriptions and then it's also sales while the rap rapsels. If you go ahead and open up your packet, I did include two extra years just to show you a little bit about Hutchison, about the Eagle Press history. Included twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. The bold is the information just for Hutchinson County, and if you look just above that bold, it'll have the inside county circulation. In twenty twenty, we did take a hit. It was directly related to COVID and we decreased two point nineteen percent, which left us inside the county with a circulation of eight hundred and fifty. If you'll go ahead and turn the page, I have provided a side by side comparison of circulation history for the border news Herald and for the Eagle Press over the last three years. If you scroll down to the very bottom, that's where twenty twenty three is.
Inside. I'm scrolling.
Oh. If you will look at the very bottom, you'll see that inside for twenty twenty three, our inside Hutchinson County, which is not including all of our circulation, is one thousand seventy nine. We have increased our circulation by twenty point four two percent over the last three years. If you take a look over at the border news Herald, their total inside the county since, I'm sorry, circulation is three hundred thirty two. My subscriptions alone total more than their total circulation inside Hutchinson County. And if you compare the increase to their decrease of fifty two point sixteen percent of circulation over the last three years, that's well over seventy percent discrepancy between the two of us with me coming out on top. Does anybody have any questions before I go on? And well, one question I hope you, I was hoping you would ask me where I got this information.
I was just.
Okay, where I got this information is that we are required, the news Herald and I, we are required to publish our statement of ownership. And I had a photo copy theirs. This is the oops. This is the news parents. I did a terror sheet where you could see the full one and then there's stapled to it. It's also a close up and here's my reports. These are put in the newspaper by, you know, by law, we've got to do it. And so that's where I got the figures. It's public information. Yeah, and while that's going around, are there any concerns concerning circulation?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Inside county, how much of that is concentrated in Frits versus the other?
I really like that question. If you look at circulation, how it goes in rating, who has the most? Border has the highest circulation, then Frits, then Stenham. We are in all of Hutchinson County, but those are the top three. So that's, that's how it ranks. Border, Frits, then Stenham. We're actually increasing dramatically on circulation in border. And I received letters from subscribers saying thank you that are from those that are now receiving a paper. And I will say that these numbers do not reflect what it is today because we have increased our circulation, our subscribers specifically, since these numbers were registered. Any questions about the circulation?
And you publish one week?
Yes, I published on, we hit the stands on, on Thursday and it's dated Friday. I don't think we have had a problem with getting advertising in. I work with anybody who needs an ad in the paper. I hope that it gets there by Monday or Tuesday, but there's been times if they need an ad in, we will go ahead and we will put it in on Wednesday as long as I get a notice. I mean, I don't think there's been a problem.
No, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, well, moving on, are you guys ready to move on to the next part?
Yes.
Okay, that is, that is on circulation. The next, I did a side by side comparison on cost. Now, the Eagle Press is six dollars a column inch. And I'm assuming that the border news Herald is dropping from seven fifty to five dollars a column inch for legal rates. When you look at it, you're going, okay, Tara, that is less expensive. Why didn't you drop your price? Well, let me explain to you why I did not drop the price. One six dollars in this market is actually below normal and it is a fair price. If you break it down, and I did comparison of a thirty two column inch ad, which is about a quarter page ad. I did a big one so we can have a big number. It is the same ad that runs in the same paper. For thirty two more dollars, you get three times the people, your constituents receiving the information that you want them to have. And if you break that down by individual circulation, you're spending seventeen cents a paper, a circular, a circulated paper to get to your constituents. Whereas with the news Herald, you're spending forty eight cents and reaching a third of the people you are with me. Do you have any questions concerning that? Anything on, no questions on the cost part? I, I will say one of the services that the Eagle Friends likes to do is that we do terror sheets, three terror sheets, publisher's affidavit. And I love the fact that I can send those electronically. Some people want it electronically, some people want it electronically and physical, and some people just want the physical. And I do the three terror sheets, so one for your file, one to give to whoever you need to, and one just in case Murphy comes around and you need another one. Also, I post on the Texas State website where you can, where people can go and see the ads. And I went and did a search and I've not seen, I have seen my paper have the legal ads there, but I've not seen the other newspaper have ads there. So moving on, if you don't have any questions on circulation. I would like to talk about the benefit to the community. I am very blessed that you guys allowed me to be paper of record. I have tried from the beginning of owning the paper to give back to the community. First, I would like to say I am locally owned. I am Hutchinson County. I ran the paper from, from Frits. I also run it from border where I have an office there. I will say that I've been able to give to organizations that are not just Frits, but are the community minded throughout Hutchinson County. And again, I'd like to emphasize that I am a locally owned business. We're bringing the Panhandle Press Association Convention in July. That's directly because I was in charge and they said I could have it wherever I wanted. And instead of Amarillo, I chose Hutchinson County, and that's where I want to have the convention. The other thing, going back to locally owned, the people that own border news Herald have not for decades been in Texas. They are actually right outside Chicago. HPC of Texas, and this information I got public record. HPC of Texas, the company filing status is listed as forfeited existence. And what that means, it's an inactive status indicating that the corporation or limited liability company failed to file its franchise tax return or to pay the tax due thereunder. Okay, they also own business Indiana, Pennsylvania, I also believe Oklahoma and Canada. All of those are not in forfeiture. They're not incorporated existence, only the one in Texas. I would just like to tell you that I appreciate this opportunity. I take it serious. I, I take my job serious. I am part of Hutchinson County. I give back to it. I've worked hard in this business and continue and will continue to do so. I'm locally owned. I have higher circulation and I believe I have a better price. Is there any questions? It's fine. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to look at some newspapers, I do have some papers in the book. Don't want some? Pass them around.
I look up.
Oh, here, maybe I'll just hand it to you. Yeah.
Every week.
You can keep it or I can take it either way. Thank you. So any questions?
You guys have any questions for Tara or for the border news Herald?
No, I have a message. I don't know what she goes through the MRI. So the circulation that she was talking about being three times, so Tara only puts out one paper. So of course her circulation was higher and on ours, you have to multiply that for each day that our leafers are out.
Actually, is what she was just telling me. Actually, you don't because you're talking about how many people are being breached for that ad at that time. You do not multiply it to say that that's the new number. You, that's why they.
Because yeah, it only comes out one time.
This is not a per week.
But it's going to the same household.
Yes. So, yeah, so that, that's not accurate. Is there anything else?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Y'all heard the information. Are you, do, do I hear a motion to approve a newspaper of record?
I move to approve the awarding of the newspaper record for twenty twenty three, twenty four, because we do it yearly, right?
We, we don't have to, but we have the last couple of years.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything by law that says we have to. Do you know if there is, Leisha?
No.
I, I don't know, but we just have to award a newspaper.
Okay, to the Frits, to the Eagle Press, Frits.
All right.
Hutchinson County.
All right, we have a motion. Is there, do I hear a second? Anybody? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? You oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you both, Tara and Destiny for coming. All right, item twelve is to consider and or approve the Accurate Agreement for Constable Precinct Two. Can you unmute Angelica? Angelica, are you on?
I am.
Oh, okay. Did you have some information that you needed to present in regards to this? Because I have not seen a contract. Did you get Craig to look at one?
I did. I apologize. I didn't send it to you. Yeah, I got Craig to look at it and he sent me an email back saying that he's good with everything on there. It was already fixed into my budget. It's just a contract basically saying that I'm not gonna share any of the information or misuse the information in any way.
So do y'all understand what that is for? We used to have that in the JP office and it's basically you type in information and you can get like address updates and, and so you can locate individuals.
Yeah, you can use it for criminal investigations. I'm right now in the middle, knee deep in tax papers that I need to get served and that can also help me, you know, locate any persons that have moved out of the area to try to find where they're at, so that way we can get them their papers and make sure that they get their taxes paid. Same way with any other civil papers that we have. But it helps with both. I mean, it's like, if I put in your name, it would help me find relatives, any kind of anything that's attached to phone numbers, addresses, things like that, that we can help locate these people and get them served and also on criminal investigations, it would help as well.
And you have the money in your budget, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, anybody have any questions for Constable?
I just have a statement. It's, I cannot approve a contract I have not seen.
Okay, yeah, if you can get us a copy of that and we can review it.
Okay.
Then we might.
I'm sorry, I thought I sent it to you in that email.
Is it not this Lexus Nexus thing?
Yes.
Oh, so it's not the.
I, I.
It's called Lexus Nexus, but it's the Accurate Program.
I'm sorry.
That's probably my fault for not checking that out.
I saw.
Oh, you saw it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I seen that. Yeah.
Yes, it's Lexus Nexus is the, is the company. Accurate is the actual program. Sorry.
Okay. Well, I did look at that one.
Okay.
Okay, so any more questions for Constable?
No, I move to approve the agreement with Accurate for Constable Precinct Two. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thanks, Angelica.
Perfect. Thank y'all so much. I appreciate it.
All right. All right, item thirteen is to consider and or approve the universe agreement for Roden Bridge. So we finally, finally moved forward and we got all of the legal stuff done that Craig was needing for that contract. So basically it was just the addendum policy that they finally added and we just need approval on that for the uniforms for Roden Bridge.
I'm making, are you asking for a motion?
Yes.
I'm making a motion that we approve the universe agreement for Roden Bridge. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you for working on that, Dwayne. I know that took forever. All right, item fourteen is to consider and or approve the purchase of two vehicles for the sheriff's department. Sheriff. Okay, well, you might just go over the two we've got and see if they have any questions on those. I sent those out to everybody. So do you guys have questions on the two quotes that the sheriff got? I just called him and, and just asked that maybe he get just a couple more from a different, even though tips is part of a co-op agency and we don't have to have those. I knew that you all would probably be asking for them, so. Or we can.
And our purchasing policies require it.
Yes.
Not through.
But this is, even if we do go through two tips.
More than one quote if it's over twenty five thousand.
Even if we go through a president. That even if we go through a co-op.
To go out for the bid.
We don't have to go out for a bid.
We don't have to go out for a.
We just get more quotes.
More than one.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Because we own the ugly.
Yeah, just to get more quotes so we can.
Yeah. Make sure. Action office to go out.
And so he could find another vendor on tips. And.
What, one thing I will tell you that the sheriff did advise me of is that these two vehicles are available right now. Is that correct, Sheriff? And didn't? Can you come up here and talk to us? Why I can't hear you?
So Tahos and the Explorers, unless you have them reserved or ordered and they're still gonna be far, far out, border PD's still waiting on something. So basically I got with them, asked them what they had in stock there, so you didn't have to wait forever to get them, so. The other issue is so it opens with a Dana safety supply, so it can be a little quicker in getting them outfitted. And we're still getting some outfitted from the last office that we got that we ordered.
So these come completely outfitted.
Yeah, we'll have to have a radio put in them.
Right.
Video system, but other than that, they'll have a lot.
I know it's, we've had a little decrease in our law officers. Are we vehicle poor right now, like needing a vehicle or are these a necessary thing?
Well, he's got money in his budget and he needs to get some new vehicles.
To replace it.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, these.
Well, we need to know which ones they will be replacing.
Are you wanting to trade anything in? I was looking over your list. You got like ten, eleven vehicles whose school hit, hit mileage. If they're not already, they're going to this year. So.
Right, and we, we talked about that. If we get that SB twenty two money, remember we talked about that. Well, when we get that.
Yeah, that's not a guarantee till we get it. Lot of vehicles.
Yeah. So hoping to solve that mileage problem are the, these are going out to patrol, right? Like your deputy, oh geez, you know.
Yeah, I'm gonna replace cheap train. With the pickup and then littering go to patrol as well.
Okay.
Of course, we should get the insurance money from the one that was sold. And of course, we should get the insurance money from the one that was stolen from that Explorer. Kind of go from there. Other than that, once we get that money in.
I think I'd like to see what you're trading in or not trading in, but maybe replacing. What vehicles replace, even though it's in your budget. And then as we have done with other, just some other quotes that you might find.
And the policy says they need purchase of goods from 10,000 on the 50 must be quoted from multiple vendors to ensure that we're getting the lowest best price.
Do we have another vendor you can call?
We have a couple that I can contact. I haven't got them yet, so.
I think that's what, you know, I gave you the heads up on.
Correct, yeah. I was asking to ask you to table it, cause I hadn't done it yet.
Okay. Well, thank you. But they did ask you for more quotes before today? Or?
Yeah, I called him.
Okay.
I might get some more quotes.
Cause I was just going to mention that I had forgotten about that, but I, I hate, I hate when we get here and then we have to table it because of time sensitive things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
I wouldn't have called you.
No, no.
The same in general, we're all.
But so.
That's the, yeah, that's the other thing, those vehicles might be gone.
Right, so that, that's, that's the thing with these vehicles is that they might be available today and next week they're gone.
Right.
But we have a policy, so.
So do we motion to? Or I always get.
Yeah, you got to motion to table and we'll put it on the next agenda.
I motion, or I move.
Well, hold on a second.
I'm sorry, I did what I used to do. I apologize.
So currently we're not converting as a department without these two. I mean, it's, it's probably harder, but we're not.
Does everyone have a vehicle?
Not missing people in the streets.
No, so.
Okay.
No, so it's not a diary.
Isn't that buddy's walk in or?
That's a different situation than I would be.
Unicycle.
Yeah, I'm going to put my Tahoe in patrol probably, but you can see how two is.
Hey, any other discussion y'all have? I hear a motion to table? Or whatever you want to motion.
I moved to table this, other stuff comes to light. And I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll get those to you in a few days.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second to get some additional quotes, correct?
Yes, I apologize. I forgot what we were.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, item 15 is to consider and or approve any ARP grant projects. I didn't have any requests, so. Just the one from Julie that pays, so that's it. Item 16, consider and or approve the burn ban or rescind the burn ban? Jerry?
Apparently our grant index is a 377. We have several mitigation projects that we're currently working on. Open to bring something to the court about that next. But right now I would like to take no action on this. We have a little bit of a.
Chance.
A chance, yeah, a small chance, but maybe we can pull something out of this. But so we started looking at the burn ban when we start getting a drought today. So anywhere between the 450 and 500 mark, just depending on our fuel loading that we have, which right now is quite a bit. So it is climbing, it's getting there pretty quick, but right now I'd say no action.
I'll just add my two cents worth in here. We had a meeting at the Dome last week for wildfire mitigation. And there was lots of people present that are involved with that. I think Texas Forest Service, National Park, Carson County, Gray County. You know, that, the big path of our fire, fires. And so all the players were there. It was great. Jerry did a presentation. He did an awesome job representing the county and, and providing that information. So that's what he was talking about coming to the court with some proposals for some mitigation process, so.
Was it Wednesday at lunch?
It was Wednesday.
What's it? There was, yeah, there were a lot of people.
Yeah, it was really good, really, really good and informative. So we appreciate you, Jerry, for that. Okay, so no action on the burn ban at this time or no change? Item 17, consider and or approve disposal of awfully office equipment. I do not have any. 18, accept certificates of completion from elected or appointed officials.
I don't have any at this time.
Item 19, consider and or approve requests for use of the club rooms at the Borger Library or Fridge.
So I have a request to move the baby shower they had scheduled for November 4th to the November 18th. And then I have a baby shower scheduled for November 11th. That's all I've got so far.
What?
I don't have anything. Anything I haven't already reported?
All right, do I hear a motion to accept those?
Make a motion to approve those as presented.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Right, item 20 is to consider and or approve line item changes, transfers, and or budget amendments.
That's all, sorry. So we had a couple of amendments for typical year 24. We have one for insurance proceeds that were received from the library to fund damage. A portion of those funds were added to the maintenance and equipment for Borger Library. The majority of it went to the library books account to replace the books. And that's what. A second was insurance proceeds that were received for the sheriff's 22 port interceptor. They hit a deer and some of that money was added to the maintenance to get that vehicle fixed. And then we have a line item transfer from the museum during budget. Their part-time salaries, line item was not addressed. It's kind of the same as it had been prior. And but Amy discovered that that was not going to be enough to cover their usual part-time salaries. So Clay has submitted a line item transfer to move money from various other lines to increase that part-time salaries. Line item to cover the additional expense and taxes and return. So there's no change to the budget. It's just moving it around from his equipment.
And Clay, you think you'll, you'll still have enough money in those line items to do what you need to do for the rest of the year?
Absolutely confused on how to do that. And Amy did all of it by the time I got there. I thanked her the other day. I thanked her again. But Rosa was going to have to cut two hours a week off her schedule. And she needs the money and that's only fair. It would have affected Rick over time too. So I think we'll be just fine.
Okay. Anything else, Leisha?
Nope, that was all. We didn't have anything for the prior year.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the line item changes, transfers, or what budget amendments.
Here, second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, item.
Can I go back to the sheriff's vehicles just to point out something that I would state is?
Yes.
From the policy, it breaks it off at 50,000. Anything over 50,000, it doesn't mention anything about having other quotes.
Multiple quotes?
If you're going through a.
I was thinking I was wrong.
If you're going through a co.
If you're going through a co-op?
That's correct.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Hold on, it says the use of purchasing co-ops are allowed under local government code. However, it is the. You repeating it again? However, it is the policy in Hutchinson County to obtain multiple quotes for all purchases over $10,001. Therefore, any purchase over $10,001 must include multiple quotes, perfectly agreed. So it is in the policy.
Not the cap. Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
I know there's been quite a few times where we haven't, we haven't got multiple quotes before on a lot of things.
The only time we haven't that I can remember is when they, nobody else would quote. Isn't that correct, Leisha?
Or if we go out for a sealed bid.
Yeah, or we get, yeah.
These are sealed.
No, they're just quotes. Yeah.
That's all I want.
Yeah.
You can, you can call who you want.
Okay.
Since it's, since it's not a sealed bid, you have to notify them. And so.
Yeah.
If.
Yeah, that's what the sheriff did. He called them and gave them what, specked out a vehicle and said, give me a quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just asked him to call someone else and get.
There's, there's been times where I've had to.
I don't.
Well, our policy says we do.
I don't remember doing that. We've sent Hannah back because she got one out of when she got on.
Yeah, but that was a bid, wasn't it? And it was.
Well, she started out with three quotes from vendors and then we were, then we told her that she had to go through the sealed bid or through a.
A co-op. Yeah, that was right.
And so she went out for a sealed bid and received none back.
Right, then she started looking at the co-ops.
But she didn't find it.
That's right.
She didn't go and find anything.
But it is policy, which is. Thing we're not, I mean, if he would have said we have people that aren't on the streets. I mean, that, that's an emergency thing. I would have, I would have changed that and looked the other way, but.
Well, I said, we should always try to get more, right, the more quote, but if we can't, we can't.
Our policy says.
We should try.
And nobody's heard and he's okay with table. I mean, we need to stand by that.
All right, item 21, consider and or approve advertising, opening, accepting, or awarding bids.
I have none of those.
22, consider and or approve donations to Hutchinson County. Don't think we have any that I'm aware of. 23, consider and or approve reports from elected or appointed officials.
I had to, I have Rochelle Oleas, the CEA FCH with the Extension Office, submitted Extension Activity and Travel Report for September 2023. And then I have Nancy Criswell, Library Director, submitted her year end comparison for the Hutchinson County Library.
That's all. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve those reports?
I'm moved to approve the two reports committed. And I'll say in it.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, item 24, Discussion of County Judges and Commissioners, Precinct Daily Operations. I will start. We had a wellness seminar, of which I did not see anybody there. Much worse.
Should we go if we're not on the insurance?
Well, no, if you're not on the.
See, I'm not on the.
Doesn't really apply to you. Cause you have to, the insurance. You have an excuse. But I always think it's nice and supportive if you have some free time to come. We had three sessions. They were well attended and we, they rolled out, they kind of gave us the information, rolled out the new information on our new wellness program. So it's, they're transitioning from the Sonic Boom program to WebMD and kind of went through that. So I do have information in my office that I can hand out to y'all. But other than that, we had good attendance. So y'all have anything?
I had to go clean out the road bushes after. And they had a wasp problem on the exit door.
Oh, oh, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Well, it's probably voting.
Yeah.
Yeah, every year, and I usually.
Heard poop on this side.
Go ahead and take care of it and I forgot.
Must have been terrible this year.
Oh, I know, I know. I got stung. I was still in Kelly. I got.
Uh-oh.
But not this one.
Anything else around the county? Yes, library's good, museum.
Museum's got the quilts. They're hanging until, is it the 5th?
7.
Or 7th, 7th.
Yeah, well, everyone, please go by there and vote.
They look awesome.
Yeah. There's pretty good ones there.
Library just had their food sale. They seem to probably bring the, the numbers next time. It was this weekend. And I did, and we probably will honor them at some point here, but I, I was able to attend the Gold Star Banquet.
Oh, good.
Last week, we had to, Michaela White and Carly Floyd got the Gold Star there and it was a really good banquet.
Good, I'm glad you're able to come to that. Um, I might say something else. This weekend they had a walking and a driving tour of some of the historical places in Hutchinson County. And Clay narrated that, correct? Yeah, so yay, yay for the museum and all of their information. And I heard it was awesome.
You heard Nicole?
Yes, she did a great, fantastic job putting that together. You're adding that. Yes, absolutely.
Sold out and nothing flat. In fact, they sold out two tours. And I put together information for as many as she wants.
Right.
So we can have a different tour and see something different every time.
Yeah.
Long time.
I think it's awesome.
Did take the tour in the new Mercedes?
No, they didn't want to drive that out to the old cemetery at once.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that path of the trees right there would have.
They actually went out there and trimmed the trees and it's still.
Still.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure the fire module that we use to transport some of the people out there, including me. I was pretty scratched up.
Yeah.
Anyway, thanks for your part in that.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a good turnout.
Good. Right, anything else going on within the precincts? No, okay. Uh, 25 is the, to consider or approve any struck-off tax properties or tax deeds? We have none. Y'all will be glad. So 26, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any adjourn?
Before you guys leave, can I get a phone with you guys, please?
No.
Mom, we're fully coordinated.
I know.